Good evening, everyone. The election for Minnetoka mayor will take place on November 2nd, and early voting has already started on September 17th. Vote in person at Minnetoka City Hall. There is no party designation for this office. Tonight, appearing in person for our second forum for Minnetoka mayoral candidates is Brad Weersum. We will first call on him for a 90-second opening statement.
Good evening. I'm Brad Weersum, and I'm running to be reelected as mayor of Minnetoka. Thank you to the League of Minnesota -- or the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I have lived in Minnetoka for 30 years. My wife Karen and I have been married 38 years, and we have four children. We raised our family here. Our kids attended Minnetoka schools. Two of my children are twins with severe disabilities: Down Syndrome, prematurity, and other challenges. They live in Minnetoka, and I am thankful that they are welcomed and appreciated here. I love Minnetoka. I am honored to serve Minnetoka for nearly 19 years as mayor and as a city council member. I am running for reelection as mayor for several reasons. First, I offer the experience and leadership skills to successfully serve as Minnetoka mayor. Proven leadership is needed at this time in our history. Second, this is a very challenging period for all people in leadership. The pandemic has taken an enormous toll on the people of Minnetoka. Throughout COVID-19, I worked to listen, to lead, and to demonstrate empathy and support for Minnetoka residents. I urge everyone to be safe and to have hope and confidence that we will get through these difficult times together. Third, being mayor is a people job, and I truly enjoy the work. Finally, given my public service and business experience, I provide a depth and breadth of experience to the city. My analytical and strategic skills will help Minnetoka prosper in the future. I ask for your vote, and I thank you.
John Cool is also a candidate for mayor of Minnetoka. He was called away today on a family emergency. So instead, we will have a video opening statement from John Cool.
Good evening. My name is John Cool, and I'm running to be your next mayor of Minnetoka. Thank you to the League of Minnesota Voters for hosting this forum tonight. My apologies for not being able to attend due to a family emergency out of state. Please visit my website, johncool.com, for my answers to the questions from the forum this evening, which I will post next week. Minnetoka is my home. Originally from Iowa, I moved to the Twin Cities right after college to start my career. Soon after, I met my amazing wife Michelle. And when we decided to start our family, Minnetoka became our forever home. We found a place to raise our children, connect to the community, and love the city around us like so many of you have. Today, both of my kids, Jordan and Zeke, attend Hopkins Public Schools, where I am also a school board director. I have been fortunate to serve on the board while we have conducted robust engagement sessions with many community members about what issues matter to them. I want to bring that to the city of Minnetoka. I will govern the same way I've campaigned: with honesty, accessibility, and open conversation. Making sure Minnetoka is a place where everyone feels welcome, safe, and heard is my top priority. New city management and governance opens possibilities to balance recreational opportunities with environmental sustainability, develop a housing stock that creates opportunities to live in Minnetoka, ensure community safety by increasing transparency and communication between our Public Safety Department and citizens, prioritize diversity and equity in all the city does, and engage all community members, including youth and seniors. Like many of you, I value fiscal responsibility, and I will ensure these priorities are carried out with respect to the concerns of the taxpayer. It's important to me that all voices in this city are heard. Within Minnetoka, presidential elections have over a 90% turnout. But for mayoral elections, it's closer to 20%. This is an incredibly important election for Minnetoka during this pivotal moment where we have the chance to determine the future of the city, a future that can be different from our past. So please, come out and vote for me on or before November 2nd. Thank you and good evening.
Now, we've heard the candidates' opening remarks. Let's go to questions which were submitted in advance by the voters. Our first five questions are yes/no answers, so we will not need to time them. But after answering those questions yes or no, we'll give you 90 seconds to clarify any of the answers that you've given. So let's start with the first yes/no question. Do you believe that masks should be mandated in all public buildings?
No.
Here's the second yes/no question. Do you believe city employees should be required to be vaccinated?
Yes.
Here's the third question for yes/no answer. Do you believe that there is an equity and diversity issue in Minnetoka?
Yes.
The fourth yes/no question. Would you support an ordinance that would require developers to provide a portion of mixed-income housing in their developments?
Repeat that.
Yeah, certainly. Would you support an ordinance that would require developers to provide a portion of mixed-income housing in their developments?
Yes.
And here's the last yes/no question. Do you believe that Minnetoka needs to address climate change within the community vision?
Yes.
Thank you so much for answering those very hard questions with yes/no answers. And now, if the timer is okay with it, we'd be glad to give you 90 seconds to comment on any of the answers that you gave.
All right. Well, those are challenging questions to answer just yes or no because there are nuances to all of that, and I want to comment on that. As far as mandates in the city, we had a mandate requiring masks in all city buildings, and we were unable to enforce it. So we provided the illusion of safety that did not exist. So I do not support a mandate that will not be enforced. However, I think vaccinations are very important, and I think that people need to be able to feel safe. And employment in Minnesota is at will, and I do think that vaccinations are important and that employers have the right to require vaccinations among their employers. Now, that's not a decision the city council would make. That is a decision that the staff would make. So my answer to that question is qualified. Do we have an equity issue in Minnetoka? Well, I think that respecting people who are different than we are and diversity is an issue in every city in America. So I don't think there's anything unique about Minnetoka in terms of its needs on equity because it's a situation where bias exists among all of us in every city in America, in every state in America. And so awareness of justice and equity and inclusion are issues that need to have conversation in our city.
Thank you very much for your clarifying answer. Now, we'll go to all questions with a one-minute answer. And the timer will hold up a sign when you have 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and when you must stop. So here's the first question for one-minute answer. How would you support small businesses as we continue in the COVID pandemic?
Well, small businesses need support, and they have gotten them from the city of Minnetoka, and I voted for that as mayor. We provided grants, small grants, to cities and to small businesses in our city when COVID-19 struck because we knew how at risk businesses were, and we provided forgivable loans and grants to businesses. I think expanding that sort of support and continuing that sort of support is important. I've heard of companies and small businesses that have hung on by using credit cards and all of the credit that the owners have. And there are many small businesses now that are hanging on by a thread. And I think this is an important time to continue the type of support we provided previously to enable our small businesses to survive so that they can thrive when the economy improves.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. What strategies would you advocate for protecting the 30% that are renters in Minnetoka?
Well, clarify, well, this is a question from the public. I mean, protecting, I'm not sure what that means. People need all sorts of protections. Do they need public safety? Do they need -- what types of support? I'm unclear on what is being asked. If the question is about eviction issues, which I suspect it might be, but that is very unclear from the question, I think that we have programs in the city, and we do need to support renters with renter assistance and so forth. But at the same time, eviction is a challenging issue because we have landlords who are hurting as well. And so there needs to be an approach that puts money into the hands of renters that are at risk so that they can make their payments to their landlords so that all of these housing developments don't go under themselves. So it's a more complex answer than just wanting to help renters. But the question was unclear, so I'm not particularly satisfied with that answer.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. How has ranked choice voting affected how you campaigned?
Well, it hasn't affected it very much because I have one opponent, and so it will not be much of a factor in the mayoral race. I always -- one of the advantages that people have touted about ranked choice voting is it will cause the discourse to be more civil. Well, the discourse in my campaign has always been civil, and it will always be civil. So I don't need ranked choice voting to help me be civil to my opponent. My intention is to be respectful at all times, and that's what we expect in our council chambers at all times.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. How can we ensure that important pieces of our more affordable housing infrastructure are preserved?
That's an interesting question, and that's easy to say and hard to do. But I had a meeting today with a representative from the -- or the, excuse me, the ULI, Urban Land Institute. And we talked about a program that I am interested in proposing to help the turnover of housing from seniors to an affordable pool rather than having it go to developers, be torn down, and McMansion built because we see that happen many times in Minnetoka. So that program and that idea is more complex than we have time to go into now. But I strongly support naturally affordable, naturally occurring affordable housing. The acronym is NOAH. When people talk about NOAH, they are talking about naturally occurring affordable housing. And I am strongly in favor of finding ways to preserve our housing stock and have it be affordable.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. Should the city encourage builders to put an electric vehicle charging facility in new developments?
I think encourage is the right word. Require would be the wrong word. You know, I think that electric vehicles are going to be a big part of our future. And frankly, I think demand is going to require them. But I think encouraging by the city is the right thing. But I am leery of too much regulation, and I think that the market will bring us there rather than any requirements from the city being necessary.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. How do you think that hiring a diversity, equity, and inclusion manager will help the city council live up to its goal of racial equity?
Well, as I look at our city, it is becoming more diverse. In the 2010 census, Minnetoka was 89% white -- excuse me, 91% white. Excuse me, 89% white. We had 11% people of color. In this most recent census, we just got the results, and our percentage of people of color is more like 18%. So going from 11% to 18%, that's a growth of over 50% in 10 years. So I believe that employment in the city should mirror our population. And so having someone who focuses on that will help to ensure that we are a more just city and a more equitable city because frankly, we have some catching up to do. Hiring is often a lagging indicator. So I think a diversity, equity, inclusion manager or coordinator would be useful.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. To what extent has mixed-income housing been a success or a failure in Minnetoka?
Well, we have a long history of encouraging affordable housing. And we've had a number of policies. But we passed a policy in the last year that if there is any city support for a multi-unit building, there needs to be affordable housing in it. And if there is no city support, I believe that still, if, depending on the size of the building, at least 5% of the units have to be affordable. So I think these policies encourage the development and accessibility of affordable housing. Minnetoka has increased its affordable housing stock over the last five years by over 1,000 units. So what we are doing is working. But the issue is not that it's working, but that the need is still great and unmet. So we need strategies that will help us to meet the affordable housing need.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. How would you encourage Minnetoka citizens to be more involved in local government, especially in off-year elections?
Well, off-year elections are interesting because while the voter turnout is much lower than it would be in a presidential election year, I believe that the people who are voting are the people who are paying attention. And so there is that tension between would you rather have a high voter turnout, let's say 75%, where two-thirds of the people have no idea who the candidates are and who are not involved, or not, you know, involved, and them having, taking a guess on who should be the next mayor and the next city council member? Or would you rather have a lower turnout election but have an election where the voters are informed on who's running and where they stand? It's a difficult question. But when the Minnetoka Charter was established, the city council at that time and the people writing the charter believed that we're better with lower turnout-informed voters.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. What is your opinion about Minnetoka considering a proposal to allow ADUs, accessory dwelling units, both attached and detached?
Well, Minnetoka has long allowed ADUs in the city. The issue and change that's being considered is detached ADUs. And I think the city needs to be creative as it looks to add to its housing stock and provide more affordable housing. Now, I don't, you know, whether detached ADUs are the answer, I don't know. But a greater diversity of housing types is a goal that we have as a city because that will increase the supply of housing, both affordable and market rate. And so I think creativity and opportunities need to be explored so that we can make more housing affordable to a broader range of our population, including our kids who are getting out of college and trade schools and things like that and needing a place to live but finding our city to be very expensive.
Here's another question for a one-minute answer. Would you support an inclusionary housing ordinance that would require affordable or mixed-income housing in new developments for Minnetoka?
We already have that.
Okay. And then here's the last question before your closing remarks. How would you encourage city staff to become more customer-oriented and open to new approaches to solve problems?
Well, I know that our city staff, and I am a fan of our city staff, and our city staff works hard to be customer-focused. I also know that our city staff isn't perfect, and not everybody has a good day every day. Our city staff is made up of human beings, and sometimes our customers are not particularly friendly or easy to work with as well. So I always encourage city staff to be professional, to be kind and considerate, just like I encourage anyone to be professional and kind and considerate. And the thing that I would say to residents, if you have a bad experience, then call your city council member and ask for their assistance because the one thing calling a city council member or the mayor does is it greases the skids. It accelerates the importance of an issue in the minds of staff. And they get a lot of calls and a lot of questions.
Thank you for answering the questions that were submitted by residents of the city. And now would be your opportunity to make a one-minute closing statement.
Thank you again for being here this evening and to the League of Women Voters for organizing this candidate forum. I ask you to vote to reelect Brad Weersum as mayor of Minnetoka. As a candidate, I offer the residents of Minnetoka the experience and commitment to be a good and effective mayor. I promise that I will do my best to build on the city's legacy of excellence in governance and strong regional leadership. It is vitally important that residents have a voice in how the city is run. I listen well, and I am objective. I believe that government is best when it listens to diverse opinions from diverse groups of people. We learn from others whose experiences and opinions differ from ours. Finally, I pledge to you that I will do my homework and be an objective decision-maker, one who is fact-based and who does what is best for the entire city, not just the loudest or most vocal group. Please vote to reelect Brad Weersum as mayor of Minnetoka. And for more information, check out my website, bradweersum.com. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you to the Minnetoka mayoral candidates. Good evening, everyone. The election for Minnetoka City Council will take place on Tuesday, November 2nd, and early voting has already started on September 17th. You can vote in person at Minnetoka City Hall. There is no party designation for this office. I will now introduce the candidates who were able to accept the League's invitation to appear for our third candidate forum of this evening, the Minnetoka City Council A and B candidates. There is one open seat in both the A and B district. For city council, pardon me?
I'm an incumbent.
Oh, I see. I think the script means that both seats are up for election. So the city council at large A candidates who are appearing tonight are Deb Calvert and Iola Kostrowski. The city council at large B candidate who is appearing tonight is Dr. Kimberly Wilburn. This forum will begin with 90-second opening statements for each candidate. And after that, you'll respond, we'll ask you to respond to questions that were submitted in advance by the voters. We have a timekeeper here in the front row, a League member, who will hold up time cards when you have 15 seconds remaining, 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds remaining. And then she will hold up a sign that says you must stop, and I'd ask you to just finish your sentence at that point and stop. Each of you will get a chance to answer every question, and we'll alternate who goes first with each question. And then the forum will wrap up with one-minute closing statements from each candidate. I should add that we're going to begin, though, once your opening statements are done, with several questions where we're going to ask you to answer yes or no, and then you'll get an opportunity to explain all of your answers in a following question. But to start with now, let's begin with opening statements of 90 seconds each. And let's start with Deb Calvert.
Thank you. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for arranging this forum, and to everyone, thank you who are watching. I'm Deb Calvert, your city council member at large in seat A. My family and I moved to Minnetoka 18 years ago, attracted by the outstanding public schools and amenities. It was a wise decision. I love Minnetoka. My family has been devoted to public service. My husband is a retired career wildlands firefighter and emergency manager. I'm a former U.S. Senate staffer, and I'm now the administrative manager for the Finance Department in the city of St. Paul. I follow the credo, where love is deep, much can be accomplished. I love all that Minnetoka is, and I'm striving to make it all that it can be. We live in an extraordinary, well-run, safe, beautiful city with great parks, trails, businesses, and schools. I prepare for and attend every meeting. I've worked hard to hear every perspective, talked to hundreds of people at their doors, and held a weekly constituent coffee since I was elected. If I'm reelected, I will continue to be accessible and base my decisions on the facts before me, the needs of the city, and your input. Thank you.
Next, can we hear from Iola Kostrowski?
Thank you, and thank you to League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I'm Iola Kostrowski. I am a four-year resident, a newer resident of Minnetoka. My family has come to love the amenities that Minnetoka has offered and the community that we have built up. I am my day job in a greater Minnesota HIV provider, provider engagement coordinator. I travel the state, and I work with an HIV within public health. I'm a longtime advocate, whether it's for a family during the birth of their child or real HIV provider trying to connect resources for a patient. Advocacy for anyone regardless of who they are or where they come from. I'm running for our service workers, childcare providers, who love to live in the community that they work in, for the young families who, let's face it, this last year has been really hard. I'm running for our renters, whose voices have been left out of the conversation when it comes to the needs of the city. I'm running as a past small business owner who has watched Minnetoka small businesses struggle with no real answers from the city. Running as an advocate for EMTs, teachers, and our city workforce who should be living in Minnetoka if they choose to do so. I'm running for a clean environment that not only addresses keeping our city clean for all residents, but our environmental relationships with other cities. I'm running as a former foster who wants all of our youth to have voices at the table that are making decisions about their futures. Our LGBT population who just wants to feel safe and heard. I'm running as an advocate for all of Minnetoka. Thank you.
Hello. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for all the work that went into hosting this forum and for everyone who's watching. this forum and for everyone who's watching, thank you for being engaged. Uh, I'm Dr. Kimberly Wilburn and my husband and I have lived in Minnetoka for 23 years along with our two children. Minnetoka is a beautiful city and a great place to live. We have beautiful parks and preserves and many wonderful neighborhoods, each with its own character. My husband and I enjoy biking on the mini-trails and I look forward to ensuring that we maintain our green spaces and balance between natural spaces and more developed recreational areas. As our world emerges from the pandemic and we reconnect with friends, family, and workplaces, we have the gift of building our strengths and improving those areas in which we may be weaker. Our city has many strengths, our green spaces, our vibrant, our vibrant business hubs, and most of all, our people. Minnetoka is well-positioned to be a premier model of how a city successfully facilitates environmental stewardship, provides a full range of housing options, and ensures all citizens have the opportunity to live in peace and thrive. I'm looking forward to the discussion here tonight and the opportunity for voters to learn more about each of us.
Thank you for your opening remarks. Now let's go to, um, a set of five questions which have been submitted to the League, where we are asking for you to answer yes or no. And after those five questions, uh, you'll each have a 90-second opportunity to comment on any of the answer or all of the answers you've given. So first we'll start with yes/no answers for the five questions. The first question is, do you believe that masks should be mandated in all public buildings? And can we start with Iola Kostrowski?
Yes.
And Deb Calvert?
Yes.
And Kimberly Wilburn?
Yes.
Here's the second question for a yes/no answer. Do you believe that city employees should be required to be vaccinated? And let's start with Kimberly Wilburn.
Yes.
Uh, Iola Kostrowski?
Yes.
And Deb Calvert?
Yes.
Here's the third question for yes/no. Do you believe there is an equity and diversity issue in Minnetoka? Uh, can we start with, um, Deb Calvert?
Yes.
And, um, Kimberly Wilburn?
Yes.
And Iola Kostrowski?
Yes.
Question four for yes/no. Would you support an ordinance that would require developers to provide a portion of mixed-income housing in their developments? I'll say that again. Would you support an ordinance that would require developers to provide a portion of mixed-income housing in their developments? Um, let's start with Deb Calvert.
No.
Iola Kostrowski?
No.
And Kimberly Wilburn?
Yes.
Here's the last question with a yes/no answer. I know this is hard and we appreciate your doing this with brief answers. Do you believe that Minnetoka needs to address climate change within the community vision? Um, Iola Kostrowski?
Yes.
And Deb Calvert?
Yes.
And Kimberly Wilburn?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for tackling hard questions with short answers. So now, let's go now to 90 seconds for each of you to comment further on any of those questions. Um, for that, can we start with, um, Deb Calvert?
Thank you. So, um, I'll, I'll start with kind of the, what is low-hanging fruit, uh, for me. As far as an ordinance for mixed-income housing, currently we have a policy, um, that requires developers to include a certain percentage of housing at various levels of affordability. And it enables the city to, um, uh, negotiate in a flexible way and we've been able to get additional units of affordable housing because, uh, an ordinance, um, generally provides a ceiling, um, in, and a floor. If you have a, uh, a policy, um, it doesn't hem you in by, um, you know, that if they meet the law, which would be the, the ordinance, then that's all they have to do. If it's a policy, there's room for negotiation and we've been able to get additional units of affordable housing, um, through that.
Kimberly Wilburn?
So in my discussions, uh, with, with housing, uh, people in Minnetoka who are concerned with housing, they expressed frustration, uh, in that the city had a policy but not an ordinance and that their feeling was the policy gave an excuse to not require these, the, the mixed-income housing. Um, so I think that, you know, if there's a problem with putting a ceiling in the ordinances, then, then we're the ordinances in such a way that that's, that's not an issue. Um, I would like to see the, the policy that we have codified, uh, into an ordinance.
Are you, oh, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, and I was just going to mention, um, for, for mask and vaccine, uh, vaccines, you know, the science has shown us that the best way to protect, uh, those who can't yet get the vaccine, vaccine, which includes, uh, children 12 and under and, uh, immunocompromised individuals is through wearing of mask and vaccination. And so that, and I believe it's the job of the city to do its best to protect all of the residents. And so that's why I support mask and vaccines.
Iola Kostrowski?
Uh, as for masks, I am the mother of five children, Kate and Liam, Eli, Willow, and Sawyer, who should be in bed, but if they are watching, go to bed. Um, but with that, because they're children, my children are way too young to get vaccinated at this point and so mask is the only protection that I'm able to offer besides social distancing, et cetera. And I believe that we really need to keep the kids in mind who are often left out of the conversation. Um, as for housing and an ordinance, um, the reason I said no was because we do have a policy in place, um, but also, um, rental, rent, rentals, um, aren't the only way to achieve affordable housing. There's homeownership, um, and I think there's a lot of focus on renters and not saying that they're discounted, um, but there's also disparity in being able to buy a house and looking creative ways on how to obtain that, whether it's co-housing, um, whether it's condos, whatever that looks like, homeownership, really going in like, closing that gap in the housing disparity, especially out here in Minnetoka, when you break it down by race, ethnicity, age, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So I yielded time because I thought we'd have 90 seconds to answer each of those questions and I had 30, I had 30 seconds left.
Well, I'll tell you what we'll do. Um, this, we're running a little ahead here, so if, uh, let's have, if it's all right with the planners, let's have 90 more seconds for each of you to comment on any of the questions that you answered yes/no. And I'll remind you that those questions were, do you believe masks should be mandated in all public buildings? And do you believe city employees should be required to be vaccinated? Do you believe there's an equity and diversity issue in Minnetoka? And then the one that you've discussed, um, mostly, do you, would you support an ordinance requiring developers to provide a portion of mixed-income housing, though you're welcome to comment further if you want? And do you believe that Minnetoka needs to address climate change within the community vision? So those were the five questions and so, um, I believe we have time to have another 90 seconds of any comments you'd like to make. And let's just go around again and start with Deb Calvert then.
Thank you very much. Um, uh, as regards masks in public buildings, um, in the United States, we have lost one in 500 Americans to COVID. And with, uh, rights come responsibilities and we do have responsibilities to one another and we are not out of the woods yet with the pandemic, so, um, uh, enforcement has been a huge issue and I am in, in favor of a mask mandate, but, um, it has been very difficult to get enforcement. And it was the decision of the former city manager to, um, uh, stop the mask mandate, um, that she had in city buildings because it, she didn't want to risk, uh, misrepresent the level of safety to people who might be vulnerable because of the lack of the ability to enforce it. So I encourage people to wear masks and I think it should be a mandate. Uh, and as far as vaccinations go, people, um, who have medical conditions that would, you know, there would be caveats with that, but I think it's just the responsible thing to protect our society. Um, I, I helped write our strategic guidelines to include climate and, um, I also believe that, um, we have started doing great work to address diversity, equity, and inclusion in the city and I, uh, look forward to the work of the DEI Task Force that we established this year to guide the work of the city.
Kimberly Wilburn?
Um, I will just clarify that, uh, when I say I support vaccination, it is for city employees. I don't believe that we can mandate vaccinations for all citizens. Um, however, I do believe it's well within the right of an employer to require that, uh, employees be vaccinated and particularly in jobs where you're coming in contact with the public and, uh, could potentially be a danger, uh, to the public. And, and again, as I said, it's the city's, uh, responsibility to protect all of its citizens, um, all of its residents. Um, can I hear the, the other?
Um, yeah, masks, um, required city employees to be vaccinated, equity and diversion issue, equity and diversity issue in Minnetoka. Um, does Minnetoka need to address climate change within the community vision? And then the developers requiring?
Um, I'll just speak really quickly to the equity and diversity. Last year, Hidapun County declared racism as a public health crisis. Uh, racism is widespread, it's systemic, it's everywhere, um, including Minnetoka. And so, uh, I certainly look forward to seeing, uh, the work that the DEI Task Force, uh, does, what they, what they, what they come up with. Um, but it certainly is an issue in Minnetoka and everywhere.
Iola Kostrowski?
I have nothing else to say.
Um, let's go on now to questions where we'll ask you to answer in one minute. All these, rest of these questions will be one-minute answers. Here's the next question. What leadership roles have you held specifically in the Minnetoka community in the last five And let's start with, um, Iola Kostrowski.
Well, seeing that I lived in Minnetoka for four years, um, wouldn't be able to quite answer five, um, but I will say, um, because of that, most of my leadership roles and capacity have been outside of Minnetoka and it's just what I can take on. Um, so though I have not held a role specifically within Minnetoka, I have sat on Stonewall DFL for three years, um, up until April, which had a many decisions, um, when it came to candidate to ran in races. Um, I, at one point, I was the co-vice chair. Um, I have done work in the doula bill, um, which is a state bill and affects everyone, including the people in Minnetoka who are birthing babies. Um, and I have helped on campaigns within, um, the city of Minnetoka. So they may have not been directly in Minnetoka, but they have affected the residents within Minnetoka directly. Thank you.
Uh, Deb Calvert?
Uh, thank you. Yes, I've been a city council member at-large in seat A for the last three and a half years. Prior to that, I was on the Planning Commission and I, um, was vice chair when I was elected to the city council. Um, I serve as the council liaison to the Minnetoka Economic Development Advisory Commission, which advises the city council on, um, on, uh, the financial decisions affecting things like infrastructure and development. Um, and I also serve as the council liaison to the Minnetoka Family Collaborative that supports children and families at risk. It's a group of nonprofits administered through Minnetoka School District and I'm the, uh, council liaison to that body. I also am the, uh, council, uh, representative to the Southwest Suburban Cable Commission, National League of Cities Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee, and the League of Minnesota Cities Improving Services Delivery Committee, among other, uh, bodies. Thank you.
Kimberly Wilburn?
Um, so I have been a leader with Isaiah and Faith in Minnesota, doing community organizing in, uh, SD 44 and Hidapun County District 6, which both include Minnetoka. Uh, I am currently a board member of Plymouth Area Indivisible, which is a grassroots organization, nonpartisan, that encourages, uh, residents to, uh, take part in our democracy. And, uh, outside of Minnetoka, I was the chair of the anti-racism team for Christian churches in the Upper Midwest. I'm a former board chair at my church. I'm the captain of a bike team that does the ride across Minnesota every year to fight multiple sclerosis. Um, I, there have been, I'm blanking on all of them, but there, there have been, been many, many leadership opportunities outside of, uh, outside of Minnetoka.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. How has ranked choice voting affected how you campaign? How has ranked choice voting affected how you campaign? Uh, let's start with Deb Calvert.
Um, it hasn't really because I work really hard. Um, I, I campaign the same way, um, pretty much I, uh, that I did before. This is a nonpartisan race, which I, I think is tremendously fortunate so we can focus on the issues at hand and, uh, not partisanship. Um, that's tremendously fortunate. I've knocked on, uh, thousands of doors this year, um, and, uh, met with, uh, people that wanted to talk to me at my weekly coffees. Um, and so, uh, and I have, uh, attended events, held events, um, and, uh, you know, been visible in the community at, um, organ, when organizations invite me to attend their events. So, um, I haven't really changed much about what I do, except that I do remind people to rank me number one in C.A.
Kimberly Wilburn?
Uh, similarly, I, my campaign strategy has pretty much been the same. I don't believe in negative campaigning, um, so that's, I've been at the doors and focusing on my campaign and, and what we stand for and the only difference has been, um, explaining to people how ranked choice voting works, uh, and again, asking them to rank me number one.
Iola Kostrowski?
Uh, yes, so as someone who has worked many campaigns in Minneapolis, ranked choice voting is, uh, not new to me, um, but it's interesting as running as a candidate on it now. Um, so it's changed my, um, campaign strategy, quite honestly. It's led me to making connections with other candidates, um, whether or not they're in this race or in a different race, um, and giving them suggestions. And it's honestly led to just being very helpful and trading tips of advice, et cetera, et cetera. Um, it's led to me giving back to the community. My campaign, um, already had a give-back-to-community stance when we first started, um, but so far this year, we have purchased all of our food and drinks from local businesses. Um, we've given back in school supplies and food shelves items. Um, and again, it's, yeah, please rank me number one, but at the end of the day, Deb's in this race with me and we have some pretty similar views, so rank her number two. It creates a partnership. Thank you.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. Please share with us a recent city council decision that you support and share one in which you disagree. Um, can we start with Kimberly Wilburn? A city council decision that you support and a city council decision which you disagree with.
Wow. Um, so a city council decision that I support, recently there was, uh, a proposal to, um, make a throughway street in a new development, uh, change a cul-de-sac into a, a throughway. Uh, and residents who lived on that cul-de-sac came to the city council meeting and shared why they didn't want that to happen. Um, and the city council that changed, uh, decided not to do that. Um, so that's one that I agree with. Um, one that I disagree with, I don't know that I completely disagree with the, with the decision, but with the, um, the bike trail that's going in along Baker, Baker Road, there were a lot of residents who didn't feel that they got enough of a chance to have an input into that decision. Um, I, so I think that could have been handled better, uh, to give residents, um, a better chance.
Iola Kostrowski?
Hi, so I'm actually, the Baker Road incident, um, is kind of one that came to mind of, um, I don't think there's a true of, do you completely agree, you don't, because there's so many things that go into many of these decisions. Um, but it does come down to seeing disgruntled, um, residents who are very upset, who felt like they did not hear, have a voice, um, within the decision that had been made, um, and really honestly feeling bad and really wishing. feeling bad and really wishing that that process had came to a pause, to really connect with the community. And then a decision I agree with, I would say honestly, city council and city employees and the work that they've put in to make sure that city government buildings are ran off of green energy. That's great. It's something to celebrate. It's not the end-all, be-all, but it's something pretty cool, that I can also share with my kids, and they actually understand what I'm talking about.
Deb Calvert.
There's so many great ones to choose from. It's hard to choose, but I would say voting to support a sustainability commission and having some of those members of that commission serve on more than one body. So we have, for instance, members that are on the Sustainability Commission and the Planning Commission and the Sustainability Commission and the Park Board, because that cross-pollination on those, the important issues that they advise on is very important, and it'll be very helpful to us. In terms of a decision that I disagreed with, ooh, that's hard as a, as a city, sitting city council member, because as Iola mentioned, it's, it's very complex. But I would say the way we handled the bird song development was something that I strongly disagreed with, and I felt that there would be, that we need to look at ways of looking at large properties and be more planful in the future.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. The city survey indicate, indicates that Minnetoka's water resources and our environment are a top priority. What actions would you take to honor this? I'll read it again. The city survey indicates that Minnesota, try it again. The city survey indicates that Minnetoka's water resources and our environment are a top priority. What actions would you take to honor this? Could we start with Iola Kostrowski?
Start thinking outside the box. Really incentivizing our residents to do away with mowing your grass every weekend and watering it every single day, and really look into returning the land that you're on back into some of the native plants and wetlands that it once was. This would mediate, I know in my ward, many of our flooding issues that we have every spring when the snow melts. Also, really getting the community involved. So we're talking about environment and clean water. Well, that's when you start getting the environment, the community involved. And start community gardens. That's a great place to start conversation. It's kind of out of the box. It's something new, but it's ran for the community, and it really starts the conversation somewhere, and it gets community members involved, and starts the conversation with city council members and city employees. So I guess to sum it up, get the community involved, and I completely agree with their concerns.
Deb Calvert.
Thank you. For me, on this particular issue, it's not what I will do, but what I have done. As a founding member of the P F O S Forever Chemical Subcommittee at the National League of Cities Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee, we partnered with a coalition of military communities, scientists, municipal leaders, and researchers, and successfully convinced the military to phase out the use of firefighting foams that are toxic at seventy parts per trillion, because they are contaminating drinking water near military bases, and water has no boundaries. We need to protect our own water from this. We can, we, as you may have noticed, we have been working on our water and sewer infrastructure to protect inflow and outflow, to keep our water healthy and make sure we're not wasting any. And we instituted water restrictions during this terrible drought that we had this summer, and those are the things that we've already worked on here. Thanks.
Kimberly Wilburn.
I want to echo everything that Iola said, and just to expand on that a little bit. Minnetoka has several environmental groups and experts that are already here and have already been doing the work, so I'd like to see more collaboration, more, more, more seeking advice on, on what we can do, and thinking innovatively. I think Minnetoka has a, a chance to be a leader in the Twin Cities as far as sustainability and environmental protections. So in, you know, there's a ton of things I can list that we can do, including investing in solar and wind infrastructure, investing in electric vehicle infrastructure. You know, there's, there's a long list of things that we can do, but I think that the biggest thing is to, to connect with community and look for innovative ways that we can, that we can protect our environment.
Thank you, candidates. Here's the next question for one minute each. What key attributes would you be looking for in hiring a new city manager? Can we start with Deb Calvert?
That's a great question. I would say someone who is collaborative, understands how to work with the community, is respectful of all views, and open-minded, and is a good change manager. We are in the middle of a lot of change here in Minnetoka. And want somebody that has a grip on things like city finances and administration, just a really good administrator, and someone who values diversity and will embrace it and nurture people from all backgrounds and make folks feel welcome, and someone who can collaborate and manage up. It's very hard as a city manager, because they, it's the one position that, that the city council makes decisions on, and so they have to manage up to the city council.
Kimberly Wilburn.
I think someone who is good at communication, and someone who believes in transparency for, for the city council and for the citizens of, of Minnetoka. Someone who values diversity, who believes in the, the vision of the city, and the, the goals and the vision that the city has set forth, and someone who can look at things holistically and systemically, and can, can see how, how things intersect, how a decision here might affect, you know, might affect something over here, all of those things.
Iola Kostrowski.
So echoing, being communicative, transparent, et cetera, et cetera, but also looking at systems in an intersectional way. So being able to break down a system and predict how, what the outcome will be, and listing many different outcomes. So then that way, we're not surprised when something goes haywire. Someone who has and is plugged into the community, so they're out in the community, they're talking to community members, and all community members, not just the ones who are coming to them with concerns, but meeting people where they're at within the community. So yeah, that'd probably be about it.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. Should the city encourage builders to put an electric vehicle charging facility in new developments? And because you can answer that yes or no, maybe you can explain why you think so or don't think so. Should the city encourage builders to put an electric vehicle charging facility in new developments? Iola Kostrowski, could we start with you?
I'm gonna say no. Electric vehicles are great. I believe that in new developments, if the business or homeowner, whoever wants those, go ahead. But by all means, it feels like a very, very much a Band-Aid when we talk about the environment of electrical vehicle charging stations within homes or new development, rather than looking very deeper into our environmental issues. It almost seems first-world issue, instead of taking that time and energy and looking into how developers are affecting other cities with the waste that they create after they're done with these developments. What are their, where is the waste going? What green things are they putting in new developments that aren't just electrical charging stations? And have deeper conversations.
Deb Calvert.
I'm aware that our city staff, when they're working with developers, before they come before the city council, work really hard to encourage sustain, sustainable development and robust building codes and energy codes. And I would be in favor of encouraging electric charging stations. The city is, as, as mentioned before, we, we are our, our own role model by having gone a hundred percent solar during my first term, and we encourage, and have been very successful at getting a lot of sustainable building practices, energy-efficient lighting, and energy efficiencies in general in buildings. And there are several developers that I think would probably be very willing to do that with some encouragement, and so, and we're also putting in charging stations here at the city, hopefully this year. So yeah, my, my answer would be yes.
Kimberly Wilburn.
I will say yes, too. I think, again, that Minnetoka has the opportunity to be a leader in, in the environment, and this would just be one step, I wouldn't say, you know, encourage them to put in charging stations and, and not look at the other things that Iola mentioned, because those are clearly important. But I, I think that can be part of it, and, and again, it's, it's encouraging, it's not a, it's not a mandate, so I would say yes.
Thank you. Let's go to the next question for a one-minute answer. What nonpartisan, partisan advocacy, or special interest events will you attend to ensure you are listening to all voices? I'll repeat that. What nonpartisan, partisan advocacy, or special interest events will you attend to ensure that you are listening to all voices? Kimberly Wilburn, could we start with you?
Sure. I'm not sure how to answer that one. Well, I'm here at this event, which is a nonpartisan event, and certainly I, I'm, you know, as I'm campaigning, I'm having my own events, and I've attended some other events that are nonpartisan. It, it depends on, on what I'm invited to, or what is, what is available. I, I, there, you know, I, so I will, I will attend events that I think will, that are ways for me to connect with the public.
Iola Kostrowski.
Quite honestly, all that I'm invited to, regardless of partisan, nonpartisan, and echoing what Kim said, I am here. When we say all of community, we mean all of the community, including people who might not see eye to eye as I do. And in my everyday work in rural Minnesota, I'm faced with that, you know, every so often. I run into someone who might not see eye to eye with all the things I do, but I still, I show up and I do my job, and I listen to them, and quite honestly, I break it down to the fears, if it's usually, you know, an event that I wouldn't necessarily go to on my own personal time. But I believe when you're a leader, that's your obligation. You don't get to pick and choose, and being transparent on why. If there are questions in the community, on why are you showing up at X, Y, Z, when the community is like, that's just, you know, chaotic and crazy, answering that, answering those questions, and being very transparent on why I'm attending these events. But when we say all of community, I truly mean all of the community.
Deb Calvert.
Yeah, I would say that attending this event and participating, I'm fairly, I'm sorely disappointed to see that many of the candidates that are running for these seats didn't, didn't attend tonight. I would have loved to have engaged with them, to hear all voices, and I do, I, I attend events in the community, in the faith community. I have attended partisan events, I have attended nonpartisan events that I'm invited to, and I do try to hear all voices. I met with two constituents this morning at my weekly coffee, and that's a wonderful way to get to know my community, one-on-one or in small groups. And anyone is invited to attend my Wednesday coffee at People's Organic Cafe at eight A M. any Wednesday.
Here's the next question for a one-minute answer. How would you encourage the city staff to become more customer-oriented and open to new approaches to solve problems? Deb Calvert, can we start with you?
Can you please repeat that question?
Yes, of course, certainly. How would you encourage the city staff to become more customer-oriented and open to new approaches to solve problems?
Well, you know, there's a, there is a bright line between the city council, the city manager manages the staff, so I can make suggestions. And one of the things that people don't realize is how, how hard staff works, that, you know, when you see them at meetings, that's after a full day of work, and many of those staff members are at meetings, you know, several nights a week after their daily work. That said, I've been at a couple of, of events where dialogue was cut short, in part, probably because their days were so long, and I would say just continuing to be open to having discussions with the community. Right now, we do have Minnetoka Matters, and people can offer their feedback about what they would like from the city, and I hope that they're taking those suggestions into, into consideration. That's a way that people can provide feedback, and we have items not on the agenda at city council meetings, and I hope that they take those as well.
Kimberly Wilburn.
I think it comes down to developing relationships, so developing relationships with city staff so that you can have those conversations, and putting community members in touch with the appropriate staff, so if we, if we get a complaint from a community member about how they were, how they were treated, to be able to, to approach the staff and, and talk about it, and hopefully get them in touch with, with the community members so that we can have a resolution.
Iola Kostrowski.
Leading by example. If city council and management are leading by example, and, you know, you're showing that you're open to new ideas and creating the dialogue, hoping your staffers will follow. Addressing the culture. Culture can have a lot to do with how staff project to the outside world, and if there's a lot of chaos going on inside, it's going to project onto the community, and the community is going to become very frustrated. And also addressing burnout. When people are very short, or they don't want to quite hear anything, as Deb's addressed, very long days, that creates a great storm for burnout. So really addressing that with your staff, giving them the time and breaks that they need to care for themselves, so that when they are facing the community, they're, they're the best of what they can be and bring to the table when the community is in front of them.
Here's the next question. Basically, we have three more questions, and then that's all the questions I've been given, and after that, we'll have our one-minute closing remarks. So here's the first of the last three questions. How would you encourage Minnetoka citizens to be more involved in local government, especially in off-year elections? How would you encourage Minnetoka citizens to be more involved in local government, especially in off-year elections? And can we start with Iola Kostrowski?
You meet the community where they're at. So you go and you find them, and you do not expect them to come to you. My work with Stonewall, which focused on the L G B T. community throughout Minnesota for the D F L, we met community members where they're at, whether this was going to Pride, whether this was going to a potluck in the middle of Grand Marais somewhere. We made it a point to meet the community where they're at, get them involved, encourage them to be involved, encourage all voices, and finding out, why are you not involved? Usually, there's something, whether it's childcare, whether it's accessibility to getting to and from meetings, or to the polls, or whatever that looks like, addressing that and coming up with solutions. So if it is childcare, coming up with a childcare program where youth in the community are helping watch kids, why parents are out helping candidates, or just getting involved in general. So really, meeting the community at where they're at.
Deb Calvert.
Thank you. I, I agree with Iola. It's the, there is no better way to get people involved than to meet them at their doors and encourage them to get involved. And there's a difference between getting involved in government and, and And there's a difference between getting involved in government and, and elections which elects the government. Off-year elections really give local candidates an opportunity to break through the noise of national elections. And they don't have to compete for fundraising or events with national or federal or statewide candidates. And so this gives us a chance to, you know, have events and meet people, go to their doors, whether it's in apartment buildings or single family homes and find out what's important to them, encourage them to vote, find out what barriers there are, what their concerns are. Take those to heart and make sure that you know that you will work on those issues for them or tell them how you've addressed those issues and reassure them that their government is working for them.
Kimberly Wilburn.
Yeah, I'm going to sound like a broken record here, but getting out into the community and, and meeting people, talking to community members and building relationships and building a trust so that people see that they, that you actually are listening to them and what, what they, their concerns actually matter. Because I think a lot of people are not engaged because they don't believe that they have a voice, that their voice is listened to. So establishing those relationships, building that trust, actually listening to what people have to say is a way to get people more involved.
I said a minute ago, we have three more questions, but I see that one of them we've basically answered, or you have basically answered earlier as part of the yes, no answers, which you expanded on. So this will be our last question before the closing remarks. What's your opinion about Minnetoka considering a proposal to allow ADUs, meaning accessory dwelling, dwelling units, both attached and detached? I'll read it again. What is your opinion about Minnetoka considering a proposal to allow ADUs, accessory dwelling units, both attached and detached? And can we start with Kimberly Wilburn?
Certainly. I am in favor of Minnetoka considering both attached and detached accessory dwelling units. The reason being is Minnetoka has limited housing stock and we have established lot sizes in a lot of areas. And so there is not a lot of space to build new housing. So accessory housing units is a, is one way to address the housing shortage, one small way, obviously it's not the only way. But I would certainly be in favor of considering, considering it.
Deb Calvert.
Yeah, that's, it's a great question and it has come up on the city council. And I think there, certainly for, for my part, we're always looking for diversity of housing stock. And also, this is, this is a solution that we have, that, that we're trying to bring forward as a solution to some of the affordable housing issues, especially when you're talking about older family members or other family members, because we are a fully developed community. And this is a way, for instance, for families to have their parents stay close, be where their families are to support them and yet have a level of independence. There are issues that are, go along with that. And for instance, what happens when that family member is no longer there? You know, rental, people are always afraid that, you know, it might be rented out and, you know, what are the regulations going to be about that? And those are the kinds of discussions that we need to have. But I think it's a wonderful opportunity to talk about another kind of diversified housing stock.
Iola Kostrowski.
I, I support it. Whether it's a young family who doesn't want to move too far from home, it's a great solution. It encourages multi-generational housing, which I'm all for and grew up within. It honestly reminds me of my mom and kind of what we did with my mom. She was aging and she was able to live with us and I with her because we did have, we, we did have another living area within the house that she lived in. And so to be near her, which was also valuable to my children. So I'm all for them. Yes, are there issues that come up? As Deb has mentioned, of rentals? Yes, there is. But those can be addressed in the moment when they do come up or before. But yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, candidates, for answering all of these questions. And now we've come to the point for your closing remarks for one minute each. So I think what we'll do is just go, you know, right down the line here, that's simplest. And so can we start with Iola Kostrowski?
Yes. So my ability to look at issues through a lens of intersectionality and pinpointing systematic hurdles that can prevent real change are very unique to me. Being able to be transparent and realizing that transparency is not about my ego nor how I want to be perceived, but for the good of the people is what's best for the community. So when the community and everyone who is watching is at the polls on November 2nd, I ask that you vote for me because I can bring the transparency, I can bring the intersectional lens. To vote for me, number one, because it is ranked choice voting. And then vote for Deb here as number two. And thank you to the League of Women Voters for having me here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Calvert.
Thank you and everyone that's watching. I've worked really hard to be an informed, responsive and effective city council member. And as I mentioned before, my first election, I served on the city, on the planning commission, which makes recommendations on things like housing and zoning and land use, which the council often votes on. And now I'm on the National League of Cities Environmental Committee, a League of Minnesota Cities Services Delivery Committee, a Southwest Suburban Cable Commission, Minnetoka Family Collaborative, to advocate for and learn best practices for the issues that affect Minnetoka. And I also just meet with the community this morning. I, I met with people to talk about our tree ordinances because I'm a tree person and I want to strengthen our tree ordinances. I ask for your vote for reelection to city council to continue our work with our shared values, protecting our natural resources, safe welcoming the neighborhoods for all, a thriving business climate, modern infrastructure, financial stewardship and strong community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Wilburn.
In talking to Minnetoka residents over the past few months, I have seen a recurring theme. We care deeply about Minnetoka, our neighbors, our environment and our local businesses. As we return to our in-person lives, we see some challenges, but we are also blessed with opportunities. We've had a great discussion here tonight. And thank you to the League of Women Voters for all you have done to provide us with this forum. Let's carry this forward into action. I ask that you rank me your first choice for city council at large seat B. If you have already filled that spot, please rank me as your second choice. Thank you. And you can also find out more about me at my website, Kimberlycaresmn.com.
Thank you very much, candidates. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, Minnetoka Eden Prairie Hopkins. And thank you to those who are viewing this event on cable and video. All of you, thank you for participating in the forum. This forum is being broadcast live on Minnetoka City Cable's Government Access Channel and it's being streamed live as well. And the candidate forum will be rebroadcast several times each week and will be available on demand leading up to Election Day. You can also see it at l w v m e p h dot org. There will be a link there to the video. This event was brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Minnetoka Eden Prairie and Hopkins. And we ask that all of you not fail, remember to vote on or before November 2nd. Thank you again to our candidates and good evening, everyone. The forum is concluded.